Before we do prayers, I'd like to take a moment of silence for all the victims of Las Vegas, if you don't mind.
My prayers are:
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today is Monday, October the 2nd, 2017. The time is 7:00 PM. And a regular meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please silence electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of the room. Okay. There we go. Roll call.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie. Here. Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Darren Covington. And his opposite. Jamie Kane.
Here.
Derek Horn.
Here.
Also, you guys might want to keep there in our prayers for expanding stuffs. Just kind of, I was hoping they'd be here, but I'll say a little prayer for them. Okay. Minutes from September the 5th, 2017.
Make a motion to approve.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so passes. Old business. Ashley, second and final read of ordinance 2017-18, the Greensburg Community School Budget.
Anyone have any questions?
I'll make a motion. We pass 2017-18 on the second reading.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Second and final reading on ordinance 2017-20, City Budget 218. Do we need to do them all at once, or just do one at a time? One at a time?
Do you have any issues with any of them, or concerns? We could probably do them all together.
We're under everything out of the last work sheet out.
Okay, so ordinance 2017-16, city salaries. Ordinance 2017-17, elected salaries. Ordinance 2017-19, utility salaries. Ordinance number 2017-15, additional appropriations. And ordinance 2017-22, airport budget. And we were talking about 750 straight across the board, right?
Yes. I'll make that motion. I'll pass it on the second reading.
Got a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't have them, because I know Tom's probably waiting outside.
Sure. You mean, Tom's waiting on that? Just a while.
Go ahead. Can I remind you now? That comes on a gateway. It comes on a gateway if you just want to... Okay. If you want a motion next to it, like cross the motion next to it, it should be called.
You'll have to actually change that gateway. I think so. Okay. Okay, so any other old business? Okay, so let's go to new business. Ashley, first agreement of the 2018 Prevention Group Budget.
I'm actually going to let the executive director back, since he loves to talk so much. I'll come up and speak on it.
Good evening. Get out your wallets.
Okay. The budget that is presented for you, I know we came earlier this year and tried getting all this stuff straightened out because there was a lot of confusion to it. We have heard back from the federal government. All the changes have been made. We did have two people that were initially involved with this organization resign. We have hired a full-time member who is not a city employee, but is contracted to the city. So, this budget, again, is $125,000 a year, provided by grant money from the federal government. So we are just bringing this in front of you. Ashley, what's the cycle on this grant?
Five years.
Five years.
The second year, we have, I believe, we're on the second year, so three more years to go.
No major really changes in this, other than the salaries. We did cut down because we wanted to definitely put more focus onto the prevention and getting into the schools for the kids. So there was an increase in the prevention field of it. Again, that's our main goal, is definitely getting into the schools and talk to these kids and that. So, again, any questions?
And I did also speak with Tom's office, I thought this had been in the ordinance, but it does not, because the feds have basically, the government have basically already sent everything through, passed it. We basically just need a one-time approval that it's okay with the council for us to proceed on.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Prevention Group Budget.
Second.
This is just the first reading thing?
It only needs one.
It only needs one.
Okay, got us first and second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Patty. Owner Occupied Rehab Program.
My name is Patty Jackson, and I'm with the Southeastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. And I'm here tonight to give you guys a small presentation on the results of the owner occupied rehab program that was funded back in 2015. This grant was funded through the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority and Decatur County, and the city of Greensburg, and the town of Westport, all partnered together to help make this program happen. There was $350,000 awarded from IHCPA. There was a small grant from USDA Rural Development for $11,198. And then, the town of Westport put in $1,000. And the city of Greensburg and Decatur County put in $11,401. And without your all's support for this program, it would not have happened, because there's a 10% match requirement for that grant. So, these funds were used to assist 14 low-to-modern income residents. Six were located within the city limits of Greensburg. Five were in the unincorporated areas of Decatur County. And three were located in the town of Westport. Six of those households were disabled. Four were elderly. And two were both elderly and disabled households. And then all of them met income requirements for the program. Forty-three percent of the households assisted were very low-income, so their income could have been around $900 a month or less. Work that was completed on the homes addressed health and safety issues, lead-based paint hazards, electrical hazards, plumbing issues. Other work completed promoted energy efficiency. So if we had to put in new windows, we put in energy star-rated windows, energy star-rated doors. We put in furnaces, and water heaters, and insulation. We also did handicap showers and toilets, and addressed structural issues. Ron Weston, with Weston Home Inspections, was our home inspector for the project. And he was very involved with it, and helped make it even more successful than the last one that we did. The rehab program ended on August 3rd of 2017. And we have submitted all the closeout paperwork. And we're just waiting for Indiana Housing to come down and do a monitoring of all the files. So I have a small presentation of before and after photos that I'd like to share with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a couple extra, if anybody would like them. A couple of the houses that I have in this are located in Greensburg, and then a couple of them are in the county. But I just wanted to give you a quick synopsis of some things that were done. The first photos for 1307 Northeast Street. You'll see at the top is a before photo. This house was a lead-based paint hazard. There was peeling-chipping paint all over the exterior of the home and the windows. We put new siding on the home. We put new gutters on the home. We put new windows. And the other thing that we try to do is try to make the house so that there's not a lot of future maintenance. So we wrap the soffit and the fascia with metal or vinyl. We wrap the windows, so that I don't ever have to worry about painting those things again either. So, on the second page, you'll see her steps that she had were cinder blocks, and they were very unsafe. We put in some new steps. We also did some work inside her home. She got a new furnace, a new water heater, things that, you know, pictures. Nobody really wants to see pictures of that. So, on the next, the next home I have is 935 Home Street. The person that lives at this address is in a wheelchair. And she can only be in her bedroom, because her doorways were so narrow, she could not get into the rest of her house. So we spent funds widening her doorways. And we put in a new handicap bathroom for her, with a step-in shower, grab bars, as you can see on the next page. It was a vast improvement. And now she can get around on the entire first level of her home. The next photos, this is 609 East Shot Street. This is a property down in Westport. An elderly woman lives here. And we did a new roof, gutters, downspouts, windows, doors, storm doors. And then, we also did some siding. She had lead-based paint on the back three sides of her house. So we pulled off the old siding and put vinyl siding on it. And so now she doesn't have any maintenance that she has to worry about with her home. The next home is located out in the county. 3148 North County Road, 430 West. This home is on the National Register of Historic Places. It had chipping-peeling paint all over the entire house. And it tested positive for lead paint. And when a house does test positive for lead paint, before the final repaintage is released to the contractor, we retest the house to make sure that it passes the lead-based paint. So, we did address all the lead-based paint hazards with this home. We put in new wood windows. And we painted the entire exterior. Put gutters on, new door in the back, and a new concrete stove. This one also, we did a furnace inside and a water heater. And the last house is another one located in the county. And I'd have to say that this one is my favorite of all that we did. This person has a debilitating disease, where he's been slowly confined to a wheelchair, and he can't get around in the upstairs of his home, so he's living in his basement. And if you see the pictures on the next page, you'll see the conditions that he was living in. And it really wasn't feasible for us to knock out walls upstairs, to widen hallways for him to get around. So we renovated the basement. We put a concrete pad outside the exterior doors, so now he can get in and out of his home with these. We put in a drop ceiling and a handicap bathroom. Some cabinets for kitchen, and ways for him, kind of like a wet room in his bathroom, so that he doesn't have to climb in and out of a shower, bathtub, or anything, so... But that's just a quick synopsis of the things that we did. I would be glad if anybody wanted a copy of the actual work write-ups that were done, to see everything that was done on the houses and all the properties. We would be glad to share that with you. But I just wanted to thank you all, on behalf of the homeowners and myself, for your support for the program. It was a very, very successful round. All the homeowners were extremely ecstatic and thankful for the work that was done. And we really appreciate all the support that you gave it. So, does anybody have any questions on anything that we did? Or any questions?
Just a comment. These pictures are awesome. Thank you for supplying those to us, and providing those to us. It is amazing.
It is amazing.
Kind of a good, feel-good.
And I know you guys don't get that very often, so...
Seems like we give.
So, when I come back to ask for money for a future program.
Also, you have an alternate motive.
Not right now, so...
No, thank you very much.
But we really, really appreciate your support for the program. And we hope to do it again in the future, so, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Steve, Chief Care.
Good evening. I just let you know what's going on a little bit. I'm with the Board of Works today. And they selected an applicant for a new firefighter. So they gave me permission to go through with this. Also, I asked for promotion of Nick Gout from probationary firefighter to first-class firefighter, effective October the 16th. And also let you know that this is part of prevention week for us. And we did have a chili supper going on Friday. We've been at schools all week, doing a fire prevention and different programs with the smokehouse and other items like that. So I just want to pass that on to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Roll call.
Good evening. You all probably remember that back in the middle of August, we made applications for five projects through the Community Crossing Matching Grant Program from NDOT. And our five applications totaled to, right at $1 million. And we would match 50/50 with $1 million of city money, making available a request for up to $2 million in expenditures. On the 19th of September, we received notification from NDOT that we have been awarded two projects. Project Number One and Number Three, with a total award of $701,715.29. NDOT had previously notified us that, unlike last year, this year's community crossing applications exceeded $240 million. And they had just over $150 million available for awards. So, we got right at 70% of what we applied for. And if you do the math quickly, there's probably only 60% that should have been there. So I think we did better than the average, and that's good. The two projects that were awarded. Project Number One is the rehabilitation of Lincoln Street from Walnut Street to Main Street. And in that project, we were awarded $598,322.44. That money will be matched with funds from the Redevelopment Commission. The plan is to replace the sidewalk, the curbs, develop a storm water collection system, and repave the street. Not allowable for community crossings expenditures is the replacement of streetlights or the installation of streetlights in that area. So the Redevelopment Commission has decided to fund at roughly $200,000 additional the installation of streetlights from just south of the hospital, where the current streetlights end all the way down to Main Street. So, the plan is for that to be a part of that project. The other project, Number Three, is overlay on a few streets throughout the city, much like what we did late last year and early this year on other streets in the city. Projects, street segments included, are Franklin Street from Washington to Central. That's the two blocks that were not overlaid last year. We'll pick those up this year. Menforth Street from Main Street down to the railroad. Nightingale from Baruchel to Greenview Drive. And 10th Street from Broadway to Lincoln Street. So those were the projects that we approved for. We would have liked to have the full million from the state, but we're happy, or at least I am happy, to have 700,000, because it conceivably could have been worse than that. Any questions? Real quick, and not on your agenda, but just for your information, we have been working on the intersection of Baruchel Lane and Montgomery Road. That project is nearly complete. All the grading work and all the new pavements in. We have some seal to put down on the joints and get the pavement markings installed, and it will be done. It's a nice big intersection now. It seems like it's worked out well. I'm pretty satisfied with the results. And the hope is, the trucks can now get around the corner without getting off the pavement.
Okay. Thanks for...
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Kathy Reynolds, Animals Control.
Good evening. I believe last month, we discussed the amendment of the Animal Control Ordinance, which include vicious animals. And then, of course, I meant to add chickens and rabbits to our ordinance. So, is there any other questions?
Chris, what is the fine for you're not picking up after your job?
It's included in the first one, $20.
Okay.
For the first fence, an increasing increments of $20. 90.14 paragraph.
Okay, that's it. I know when we had Fall Fest, we had a huge problem on one square. And I've heard complaints from other people.
People bringing their dogs and not picking up on them.
Yeah. So, that's why the fines in there. Any other comments?
So, the amendment on the chickens. Comes down to, we're going to allow four... This would allow for four hens per household. They have to be 20 feet from the adjoining property.
That's correct.
I would just be interested, what's been the response on that? Have any of you heard anything from anyone? Do we want chickens on the city limits?
We are.
I mean legally. We got a lot of illegal things.
I've had several constituents, actually I had one that came up and brought this issue up. That's why we're even talking about it. But even since then, I've got a couple others come up expressing interest in doing it. And then, throughout this, we found out that there are several people in our community that are already doing it.
Talking to the evidence.
Quiet, close.
I don't know. I'm really having mixed feelings on this. Darren is not here, but I think he made a comment a couple months ago, or called farm animals for a reason. I don't need to offend anyone with a comment like that, but... I have been in communities where, I haven't lived in, but I've been through communities that have chickens. It may start out controlled, but after a while, they're running in the streets, yard to yard. Just throwing it out there.
Do we have any comments from the public?
Yes.
Okay. Just come up and state your name, and tell us what your feelings are.
Good evening. My name's Darren Coors. The residence next to mine on the street has probably 20 chickens that are running free, two or three roosters. They're always in my backyard. I know my father, who owns this property, has made several calls to the mayor's office of resolution of this to do. They have put the chickens in the house for now, until this goes through, whatever's going to happen. My concern is, I have a three and a four-year-old that run around. I'm not too sure that they're going to follow with the ordinance of the chickens, if it goes through with the roosters. I'm concerned they chase me up and down the fence as I'm mowing. I'm kicking them out of the yard daily. Their yard is disgusting next door. Their yard is disgusting next door. And they were chasing two down the street last week, and I'm just concerned with this ordinance, as Daryl has mentioned as well, being inside the city.
Part of the ordinance, Darren, is that there won't be any roosters allowed.
Right. My concern is they've been sent numerous letters already that they have not fulfilled.
Well, and Mr. Tebby has just followed up recent with a letter to them, and the owner has responded back to Mr. Tebby, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been within the last day and a half or two days that I haven't seen them. They went inside.
Never in the house?
Yes. And I, I mean, twenty feet or, I mean, as long as they're in a pen, that doesn't concern me as much as running free, but I still, I agree with Daryl that it's not really, how, of what point is it going to be out of control where there's chickens running all over the street?
What's your address again?
Ten twenty-one East Washington.
Okay.
That's all right.
Okay. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else out there who'd like to talk about the chickens? Okay. So. Didn't realize there's that big of a problem there.
Well, when you have that many.
Yeah, that's a ton.
I mean, that's too many.
Well, and to begin with, we sent a letter out, and, you know, when you send a letter out, we send it certified, and half the time, people reject them. So we get them back, and it takes the post office forever to send it back. So when we get it back, you know, then I turn it over to Chris. Because the homeowner did finally, like, two days after I turned it over to Chris, the homeowner, or the property owner, did come and address the situation and said they would make certain they were taken care of, he'd get rid of them. Well, that didn't happen. So then we turned it over to Chris, and Chris sent a letter. And since then, the property owner said that they would take care of the situation and make the renters get rid of the chickens at that location on this Washington Street. So, I mean, letters were sent out. It just takes time. And I know people don't, you know, understand that, that we have to send it up certified in case we have to go to court to prove that we actually did try to notify the property owner. So, and if they do not sign for that, it does take a lot of times thirty days for that letter to come back.
I mean, I think no matter what we put in place, you're going to have people that are going to view some things here and there. We'll have to handle that through, you know, civil matters. But I think this ordinance clearly identifies it's four chickens, no roosters. Talks about how to pin them up, you know, how to contain them. And the other side of this is, and Kathy's come a lot of time and researched what other communities did, and we tried to kind of go with something even more conservative than, I think Columbus is about six.
Yes.
So this was even more conservative than that.
Well, I mean, it's not something that can be changed, things are out of control, right?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Do I need to receive the motion? Or accept in this first ordinance?
Twenty-one. I'll make a motion. We pass twenty seventeen dash twenty-one on the first reading.
There's a second.
Second.
Any other discussions, counsel? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
You have a time break.
Great. Thanks.
Reason I, I want more time to read this and think about it. I'm with, yeah, I'm just not so sure.
Even if we pass this tonight, though, it's not final until the second reading, so we got another month.
I'm going to take this, I'm going to, I'm going to ask around. Now that I have, you know, I'm going to. Own my district. See what they're, see what they say. I'm really kind of curious now as to just how many people actually think about it.
Well, and that was kind of why I brought it up, too, is.
I don't see them. It's like, you know, I live in the middle of town. I don't have, I don't see them.
And I've heard, I've heard very few comments, but the few that I've heard have been negative. Jamie, it's just the opposite, so, you know, they just.
You're living next door to them. I'm sure you can make it. I grew up over next door to chickens, maybe it's a third possibility.
One and four?
Yeah, it was confinement, so.
Serious.
Yeah, it was confinement, but.
I have eight, and they are, I mean, they're not the most pleasant animal creature in the world. You know, and like I said before, they'll eat anything, and they're just disgusting. But I live in a county, too, and we have a, you know, away from our house, of course, but they do stink. You know, you can tell when it's time to clean the pen or eat. I mean, we probably do an overkill, but, I mean, they do stink. So. The product's good?
Has there been abundance or any?
Yes.
Probably supply to the city of those? Do we have record of all those?
I've sent two letters out regarding chickens.
With?
Yeah. I've only been back for three months, and I've sent two letters. And I got someone that admitted they had them the other day, so.
Do, is the majority of these people, do they have one and four?
Yes. One lady, they were free range. I mean, I went looking for them, and I found them because one was walking down the middle of the street.
I mean, the other side of this, though, is not passing this ordinance is not passing. There's a lot of other things that change and trying to combine. You know, I mean, and if we end up deciding that, hey, we want to eliminate the section on chickens or rabbits or whatever in those sections, it does clean up our ordinance quite a bit. You know, I mean, it's not just the addition of those items. It's kind of trying to clean up the ordinance. So, I mean, and just if we do pass it tonight, it doesn't finalize it, but it's going to go through a second reading. So we still have time to make changes to it.
Hey. Please discuss it this week or this month. Let's do that, and let's check around it. And I had a neighbor one time had chickens, and I know them over there, so that's good.
Well, and it's like, it's like I just told Jamie, too. You know, this gets into the media, and it'll bring people's awareness that we are discussing this, and maybe it'll bring more comments.
Yeah.
I'm kind of like Kevin. I'm okay with it as long as my neighbors don't get any.
Okay, Kevin, Plan Commission.
The regular scheduled meeting of the Plan Commission is out on September nineteenth. Major item on the night was a review of the plat for the D and N commercial subdivision, which is, which was submitted with three plots, two of which would be accessed off the four twenty-one entrance, and a third lot that would be accessed off Sixth Street entrance, which would be a new road from the intersection of Park Road and Sixth Street into the subdivision. For you guys, this subdivision would be located in that vacant property just on the other side of Harvest, between Harvest and the bypass. The entrance would be basically right across the road from, well, it actually lines up right across the road from the entrance to the bridge to back to the Y.
Be right in, right out?
Yeah. And then, you know, we discussed the entrance there. Traffic going in and out of the potential third lot, which is, which would be off of Park Street, which the city has a right, and that would be Sixth Street finished into the subdivision. After review, discussion, we decided to table the review, and the developer was going to take it back and review that plat and re-submit one that would have five lots, of which all the five, all five lots would be accessible from the four twenty-one entrance. And these entrance on the backside off of Sixth Street would be a gated locked entrance for police, fire, and so forth. That led to a scheduling of a special, a special meeting tomorrow to review this five lot plot plat. So.
And that plot time's passed?
Yeah, no, no, no. I screwed it up. It stayed at one time fast, so. And then one other item of business that we've been doing, is form a subcommittee that includes myself, Kathy, Ron, Andy Sholley, Roy Vindorff, and Andy Wintemper to review our ordinances. We've had a couple meetings, working on goals, thinking we want to accomplish, list of ordinances that need updating and or complete rewrites. You know, some that have come to mind are our survey ordinance, our subdivision tour ordinance. And, you know, the plan is we're going to work through some days because those ordinances are, I mean, seventeen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, and they should be updated with current times. And that is all I have.
Okay. So we got that meeting tomorrow at nine, right?
Yes. Seven AM.
Okay. Also, what I don't have down here, but I want to talk about, is the Economic Development Target Area. We talked a little bit about it at the workshop. Kind of wanted to see what your information, Chris has been gathering information on the project. So, Chris, you want to have, I think he's sent most of you guys a copy of what he's found.
It's all regulated by the state statute. And I actually had a call into the state to try to get more information out of how the state procedure would be on this. If it's a carved-out exception that where retail establishments generally are excluded from tax payments by establishing an economic development target area, up to fifteen percent of the city total geographic territory, where it could be determined to be an economic development target area that includes potential retail sites for tax payment. There's a definition that the statute talks about as far as how property would be described or why that particular property or area should be a target area. If the statute says that there has a fair rule recommendation by an economic development commission, and I'm not, we're trying to find out, and I think that may never be. Then the initial ERA was established, what commission was established at that time to approve all that, start that process, just with the ERA they have right now, or whether that would go through the development commission number TIF. So those are kind of two of the outstanding questions that we're trying to get more dials on with the state. So that's what I noticed.
Martin, wouldn't that be in the minutes from council meetings from, what, two thousand and seven?
Four, six.
Four, five, six, did I hear eight? March two thousand six. March two thousand six.
So. Can we go ahead and give this to our economic development? Redevelopment group this month? Can we go ahead and do that, Chris?
It'd be a good idea, and certainly they would be considered an economic development commission.
Right. And that's the way I felt like that's what their job is, is to do that, so.
They would just make a recommendation to the council, if that's correct.
Right. And then if they did that, then they would have to go towards the TIF group. Tax abatement group. We'd have to go through that and then go to, which we call in between the meeting and the council. Once we have enough fareable.
Well, I guess we wouldn't even look at tax payment until we approve the target area.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine.
It's pointless to, I mean, we can't even consider it until the council's approved the target area.
Okay, I agree.
This whole conversation started with regards to a piece of property that's undeveloped. My question is, is that for sure enough for this conversation of the undeveloped properties? Will the moral drive and benefit for what we're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that was the other question Chris brought up, is defining that area, defining the outline of that area, which really probably should be most of the area we were looking at, we're discussing the overlay this month.
I agree, though.
Categories, the categories that the statute cards out for this exception are retail, food, endeavor, service, automobile sales or service, or other retail. Those would be any type of businesses that would have the potential to get the payment in this target area. Otherwise, all those, all those types of facilities are excluded from receipt of the payment.
I didn't hear what you said.
Well, I mean, this whole, this all started because a person went to one restaurant, it was decent property that's not developed. Between, right next to B and C, between Hotel B and C in that area right there. It's, you know, this is what started this whole conversation with Jamie and I. My question was, if we're going to define an economic development target area, should we not, should we not include in that conversation the moral drive veteran's way? And do we want to include all of that property and designate all of it as an economic development target area? So we don't have to have.
Isn't it already?
No, we have to establish that, but that's.
So we don't have to come back and have this conversation six months.
No, I fully agree with you.
I think that's what we asked the Redevelopment Commission to approve it as a fair rule recommendation. Outline that area.
Anything along that corridor, and then between Veterans Way and the, well, the bypass, I guess. That's my opinion. Yeah, I don't think that we're going to be handing out tax abatements hand over fist. I don't think that's the whole idea. But on the other hand, if we've got businesses that are wanting to come in, I think it would be a shot in the arm to get other businesses, especially initially, to kind of generate some activity out there because all it's going to take is maybe two or three businesses start sprouting up out there, and I think that'll really do.
Okay, do you want my opinion now?
Yes, sir.
Cause I know it's gonna be a lot different. I think, to me, that area is already developed. We have a church, we got banks, we got, uh, school building, we got car lots, we got, um, medicine here, medicine place, dentist. I, I feel that place is already developed. If I was gonna cover something, I'd be out there in Veterans Way. Because that's where we need to start. Our vision is not back here, our vision should be up there on Veterans Way. Now, I also have a vision of downtown. I wanna keep downtown going, where he goes. You know, to me, that may be an area. But those are places where I think that we need to grow our city, you know, with maybe more restaurants downtown. So that people could walk to these places. But what I see, what we're looking at is, you know, if they would go out there, then TIF could help, help those groups out there on, in the TIF district. Where that's, where that other part is not TIF. So, but that's my opinion on the thing, and that's what, cause I wanna see growth after I have Veterans Way. We have growth here. But we don't have growth out there. And that's where I would like to see it start, cause I think, like you said, that one little bug, I don't think putting a big, a restaurant here is gonna start that out there. I don't know, maybe wrong. So, that's.
Well, the other thing you have to take into consideration is, you know, you're not built, it's whoever's gonna put the money for it, I mean, I, I wanna put it in the best, you have a vision for your business, what you wanna do, and you're gonna put it where you feel like you're gonna get the best traffic. I can see where.
But it's already developed there. I mean, the movie theater's there.
It's a corner block. That's called prime property. It's a corner lot. It's.
And you're, you're.
Just the way business is, I mean. And, so, I mean, you take up those choice lots, then, you know, they gotta go somewhere, so now they're forced to go somewhere else, so, I mean, fill them up and, and if they wanna come, they're gonna, eventually, we're hoping they'll go into that area, but it is probably the last really choice area within that whole area out there.
So, it's fine, whatever you wanna do. I think it's a good discussion, yes.
Yeah.
Very interesting, and, you know, uh, I have no problem going on with it to the next level. If that's what you guys want.
So, we're gonna give it to the TIF, basically?
We're gonna ask the redevelopment commission to approve with a favorable recommendation, hopefully, uh, economic development target district to include, and that's what we need to decide, what are we gonna include? Draw the boundaries. The, the overlay district, would that have included that property in that boundary?
Yeah.
So we'd have to just maybe redefine, redraw that a little bit, if, if we wanna include that area.
Would you talk overlaying? What did you say, overlaying?
I'm saying we could take the area we drew out for the overlay district.
Oh, okay.
I mean, kind of.
Because that didn't get, that didn't get passed.
No, no, sir.
I wonder why?
We have a map, and I'm just trying to give you a start, how about that?
Yeah, no problem. That was in the first time of the overlay, but it was taken out.
Would I be out of line asking, uh, Vieta to maybe speak to the council, or head us up to try to get something to present to the redevelopment campaign?
I do know that, you know, uh, Mr. Liva likes to have all of his eyes dogged and his teeth crossed, and he won't make any rash decision on anything. So, as long as we have, you know, it's black and white, what you're, what you're asking of the the redevelopment commission, then does, does that make sense? I just, I guess I would need, uh.
I'm just thinking, since you're on both, you're on both council and redevelopment. I don't know, maybe we ask Ron, if he, cause you've got, you've probably still got the map, the overlay district, if we could include that, and then working down to include this property as well, and all that.
The last version of the overlay district ordinance defined an area that was three hundred foot either side of the center line of Memorial Way and or Veterans Way.
I think we go back, we, we take the same outline as the, the, the last rap, but we took the entire property line, I think, with the first one, right? Is that the only difference? Look, we have some.
There was a version.
Residential area in that, that we don't want any property included in this. Or we don't need to include in this.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, maybe we redraw it and not include the residential area in that.
So you like some kind of graphics?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But you wanna start with three hundred foot swath minus the residential?
No.
No.
Who wants the full?
Maybe the original minus the residential. Is it the?
The, the original included the far west end.
Well, that's true, that was already across the road. Remember, it was in, uh, over there.
Well, the original residential was the moratorium that went on the other side of, went Michigan.
Yeah.
But then we dropped back and took everything in the TIF district. Well, if I get the floor tomorrow, we set down, do something, and you can do whatever you want, it's basically good.
Okay.
Sir, if I have something later?
Just thought.
Thank you.
I'll keep you apprised by legal implications, and I do want to stay.
Okay.
Chris, did I understand you to say that the limit is fifteen percent of the geographical area of the city?
Yes.
Total geographic area there.
Yeah, that's something to consider.
Anything else, sir? Sorry, didn't have that down. It's been a stellar week in May. Tomorrow's stellar day, so, uh, get a chance, might look and stop in, uh, Tim and check out the drawings and what we got going on, and tomorrow we start at ten, and we're done by one, I'll probably, uh, think it out.
Good luck with that, make it proud.
We've tried. We've won already, as far as I'm concerned. You know, we've got some plans and we're going ahead.
A lot of good things.
But, uh, we've lost some siding groups and lots of new stuff coming out, so.
I like how you've got so many people involved in it too, so many different aspects of it.
So, we're ready and we'll go for it. Okay. Hey, Steve, I'll need some ice for tomorrow too, just remember that. If you don't mind. I just thought of that. So, we'll be ready soon. So, is there anything else we need to bring in?
Harold's report?
Oh.
The Bauer report.
Okay. Okay, here we go.
Uh, not a lot on the agenda, uh, kind of a lengthy meeting, though, uh, the highlights. Uh, property owner, citizen six thirty-nine, West North Street, uh, kind of in a debate with his neighbor on whether he can park in the alley or not, and, uh, asks for a variance to the ordinance, uh, so that he could park back there. We tabled it, uh, in order to get more information, property lines, et cetera. Andy Sholley came with a new survey on the extension of McKee Street right away. Actually, this was for the, uh, Yale that was going to be coming into the city. Getting some legal, uh, things done and recorded. It was actually done in nineteen eighty-four, all the survey was done, and everything was decided by council, but was not recorded, so it had to be redone. We approved. Chief Bridges, uh, talked to us about the K nine program, and, uh, I've got a, a little booklet here, any of you wanna look at it, uh, we gave him the blessing to go ahead and pursue this, uh, to get, uh, the K nine program back up and going, and, uh, this will be at no cost to the city, private donors and grants, so, uh, good job on that. Uh, Jeff Smith, uh, brought, uh, number six, uh, to us on the project sewer plant, three hundred forty-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars, forty-three cents, it was approved. There was a change order, two A and two B, which, uh, we approved, the net cost being fourteen thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and twenty-seven cents. I believe that's it. Everything else has been discussed with council.
Okay. Remind you the part we mentioned, we, the chili supper Friday, you can make and stop in, uh, stellar tomorrow. I don't know what else you've got. And then, uh, thank Ron and, and Mark for their hard work on getting the road projects, and we appreciate you doing all that, so.
You wanna mention about the trash cans also?
Oh, yeah. It's not anything, but anyway, uh, today was the start of setting out trash cans, and, uh, people received trash cans today. This, today is the Monday route that they received their trash cans on, so, so I found out today that I want a Monday route, except my Friday, which is okay.
I don't know if they're gonna get the whole day done, but they started on Monday.
Started on Monday, so.
I checked just before the meeting, and they're still out at Court of Southern this evening, of course.
There, there's, you know, only four thousand trash cans we've got to put out, and everyone will receive one. And please read the little letter that went with it, and then.
Very pleased.
Then, very pleased, and then on the twenty-third is when we'll start the new routes. So if your little can, your big can, not little can, little can, big can has a big sticker on it, it says Monday, that's when you're gonna have your pickup. So each, we color coded each day, and on the back, there's a map showing how it's colored, color coded, and we went into sections, so. But I want to just kind of look at the, the stamp on your trash can plus the map, and you should be able to find out what day. So, for trying to, I was hoping to get Mondays done one day, but there's a lot of trash cans, so, they're out there working it.
Thank you.
And thank Jeff Steele, my gosh, love him. Big, big help, big help there, so. But here we go. And hopefully we have them out in two weeks, all out, we'll go down the road, starts the twenty-third. And then the recycle, I think, the week after, does that sound right, Mark? They're every two weeks, so.
They ran this week.
So.
They ran this week.
They run this week, so.
Skip a week.
I mean, uh, they'll run the week of the sixteenth, they'll know they won't run the week after.
Okay, so they won't be running the week when we start.
But they'll be running the week after.
They'll run the week after.
They're running heavy trash, by the way, which is the sixteenth through the twentieth.
Yeah, and so we're doing heavy trash. And we're doing a lot of trash down here.
We're empty garbage.
So. So, uh, and what was the dates on the heavy trash?
Monday, sixteenth through the twentieth, whatever day your trash is elected.
Okay, and it's no paint, no, no tires, no.
Electrons.
Electron, no TVs? No, no electrons, we have a special day for that on Saturday. I don't know when that's gonna, but it's.
It just happens, exactly. Two weeks ago, we just really got.
I think, uh, I checked, so. Side times, so. Anything else? Okay. Take motion to close for, uh, the jury. Second? Oh, fair say aye?